I'd like to call to order, please, the work session agenda on Monday, March 23. And following this meeting, there'll be a regular meeting and a special meeting tonight. So we're all around the table. So the first item is the staff will receive council input regarding topics, venue, timing, participants, and reception, and other ideas for the State of the City event. Council will also have the opportunity to discuss outreach meetings in the community to include potential open houses, taking council meetings on the road. And we have, Winat Reed, our deputy city manager, presenting. Winat?
Is this one not working? Okay. Several themes that identified, a lot of the State of the City addresses will focus on new initiatives that are happening at the city, future goals, challenges, opportunities. They can showcase primarily economic development, or they can weave that into the topic of what new economic development is taking place, marketing, branding, videos, and sometimes recognitions of Citizen of the Year. I noticed that the city of Glendale incorporated acknowledgement of the Citizen of the Year into their State of the City address. So it really varies on topics. It can be designed any way you would like to see it designed, and the content. The venues were just as varied, resorts, city halls, hotels, education centers, it was whatever was available and would meet the needs of what the anticipated participation would be. Timing of the State of the City addresses, most of what I saw within the state of Arizona were around February, March, April time. Did notice that Bacaia, and I believe Chandler was the other one that held it a little later in the year, but even out of state, a lot of the State of the City addresses, when looking to Colorado, Illinois, a variety of places, most of the time they were held earlier in the year, but I did find some later in the year. So really, again, it's whatever meets, best meets your desires and needs. And then, as far as participants, yeah, this is pretty broad, general public or the business community, again, depending on the focus and the topic. So with that, I open it up for council discussion, and I'll be taking notes and thoughts on what you'd like to include, because it really, it really is about how you'd like to structure the State of the City address, which I believe we're looking at this fall, so we can do that before the...
And are you leaving the date of it open, or are you still talking about looking at September, October timeframe?
Sometime in the fall. Sometime in the fall. That's our recommendation. Obviously, you know, if you want to change that timeline, please...
Well, I think that's a great time, because we've done a budget, a new budget. But, so maybe October, just throw that out, I'll get this discussion started, thinking about some of the people that we're concerned, we're people that are out of the area until that timeframe, but they're all back in October. So I guess every, it opens up to all the city, so. Joe, you want to start it?
October, November, you know.
Well, the only reason I don't, November, it runs in the holiday time, and I think that makes it very difficult for families. And so now you're working around Thanksgiving, you know. I'd rather work around Halloween and before that.
Halloween, let's celebrate Halloween.
An advantage to doing it before you retreat, we generally hold your retreat in November, too, so there might be items that you hear during your State of the City that you might want to consider at the retreat, so that time, something to consider also.
Wally?
So is the intention to have a State of the City event with questions and answers with the audience, otherwise?
That's not normally what they have done.
Well, then how are we going to come up with new ideas?
We can, we can send, we can have card comment, card, but really, State of the City is not for...
I thought it was just an address, just that...
It, it's just put out the information, and most of them have had some kind of hors d'oeuvres or something, but most of them that are not paid, they don't, they don't furnish as much. And I will tell you, Avondale did have, I went to Avondale's, and it was mostly business people and some residents, but not many. They were residents, were on committees, probably were there, but, and they could, and their city's quite big, and it was held on their patio, on that back patio. And it had a lot of people, but it wasn't, there wasn't just standing room only, I mean, it was room to move around, so you could tell. We could always find out how many, probably good to find out how many people came to that.
I do like your idea about later in October, rather than the first two weeks of October.
Yeah, yeah. Probably the middle of October is comfortable. Joe?
Just a question, and again, I don't know which works out better. Is it better to have a State of the City after you've adopted a budget and you're a few months in, or just before you're getting ready to adopt it, so you list some of these issues that you have on there? That's, that's my only question. Is there more value in having it as you're getting ready to adopt, you know, like March, as opposed to after a budget is done in October?
Well, you have to think of it this way, too.
Well, that's, that's the only reason why I throw that out.
Do we want, do we want that kind of meeting? I think that there is plenty enough time for people to talk about the budget, to come in, that we take it around to people. City manager did last time, we had three people. So this time, we're just going to advertise a little bit more, we're going to try to call the homeowners associations and really get people and blast it out. And I think that's the time.
I'm just throwing it out, whether, whether there's value in doing it, you know, as your approach or after, that's all.
I think the value is, if we have some new announcements, and some inspiring things that are happening to the city, and we have stories to tell about the city, and it's an upbeat, we have enough of downbeat in the emails and the newspaper articles and all of that, and you are all so accessible. And so when I hear that you're not, you know, well, these people are, don't know what they're talking about, so I'm sorry. Joanne?
Thank you, and I'm going to, I'm going to send us all to each of you, but it's great that you checked out other cities for their ideas, and we've kind of looked around. A friend of mine actually works for Rancho Cordova, and you've got, a couple of you met him, Troy, and he sent me, I asked him about his State of City, because they do multiple venues, and I just thought, and they have like 67,000 people in their city, so similar in that regard, but they have, actually, they did it November, and they had complimentary desserts, and they had many, many groups that sponsored this, but they also had live music. So they turned it into, you know, kind of a fun type of event. But just to quickly, and I'm going to share this with you, but they had things like, we got dirt on our shoes, they talked about new projects, they, how they broke ground on things, new businesses that opened, projects of the city, street projects, entertainment centers, there was a new city manager, so he, you know, was kind of introduction to the people.
We're not doing that, by the way. Let me make that very...
I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, the city manager said something.
Let me make that very clear to the listeners out there, okay?
They did give awards, they, or they highlighted the awards of people within the city. They talked about different things that are there, they had, the police came out and gave a report on different crime things, and, you know, positive, you know, things about being in the city, and, you know, water conservation, a financial report. And I, I like your idea, you know, when you're asking about, are we going to have a question and answer time, or should we have certainly cards out there of saying, what is it that's interested you that we have not, you know, spoken about, and can we get back, can we contact you, you know, or do you have any ideas, or things like that? You know, I agree that it should be open to everybody, it should be in a time when we know most people are going to be here. October is a good time, I think. I know that we get, I liked Winat's thought about, we do in November our retreat, so if we have this before the retreat, it's kind of fresh of talking with everybody.
We should know what their, what their needs are, or wants, from that, and work it around that.
Correct, correct. And, you know, it's, it's one of those things that it's open to all, and, you know, I, I think we're all, I'd like to hear from everybody, but I have a feeling where we all want it to be suc, we all, I know we all want it to be successful, but I think we all want it to be where everyone feels welcomed, and it's in a place that is something like a high school auditorium, it's easy, accessible, parking, everything, you know.
I think you're right, that's the only one that we could possibly have it in, to have the space. I mean, that's probably our high schools, our probably auditoriums are our bigger space. So, now, which one, it'll just depend on what they can do.
Right, you know, the other, the other thought, too, and back to your beginning, Winat, of talking about how do we get out into the public, and taking, you know, a council meeting on the road. If you, if you space it out between the high schools, and you look at Millennium north of the freeway, you look at Desert Edge, Central Goodyear, and you look at Estrella Foothills, South Goodyear, and it's, you hit every one of those with a meeting, and you can even have some of a presentation that people didn't, I don't, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there.
How can you, I, I think the whole thing, and I don't want me to down on this, but it's right here in front of us, it's right there looking at us, and it's being accessible and recorded and watched immediately. And I, that's where I think we've had trouble moving them to other places, because we haven't been able to do that very well. First, before we go there, thanks for looking that up, that's exactly what we had talked about behind the scenes when they asked me, in that, because we want to give some information, but I do also want to have the latest and greatest information, some surprises for them. So first, Joe, I'm going to go to. Sheri?
I, I agree. I, I don't think we have enough for multiple, or enough interest to do, start off with multiple State of the City addresses. My concern was, you wouldn't have enough people showing up, and that wouldn't be a success. I think we're going to have to build on it, start it small, since it did our first one. We've always had great success, and our department heads have always been very accessible. You know, maybe, rather than have them give presentations, we could have them be accessible there for questions, more one-on-one questions, so that we don't have somebody try to upstage the meeting, because I, I visualize it as, is the mayor gives, kind of like the presentation, and then we have other, you know, the city manager introduces the mayor, something along those lines, and then maybe the other department heads would be accessible and available to give information or get information, and then maybe we could, because we've done some very nice with economic development, have information out there for people on some of the goals to take with them, to disseminate that information, because I think that's one of our biggest problems. We think we do a really good job getting the information out, but, and we do, but if, like advertising is what, seven, you have to have seven connects before it actually reaches the, the party that you're, you're trying to sell the information to. So I think we do a good job, but I don't think we're making enough of the same repetitive connections to get that information out. So it, you know, different people get the information different ways, and it will start to flow out there. I, I like the idea of taking the council on the road or some such thing, I know that it has been a problem, I don't know if we have the ability to videotape and then put it up afterwards if it's not livestream. I know we did that with planning and zoning, we took it a couple, we always would take it, we took it once to Estrella, we took it once to Desert Edge when I was on it. I don't know the technology on that. That would also be, even if we take the council meeting on the road, we need to maybe invite the local, the high school key clubs, the, you know, the homeowners associations, the national honor societies from the high school, get people in there, get those, I want to say friendly audiences, but they're going to be very interested to learn, and, you know, maybe do it at a time, I don't know if mornings, early in the morning is better as breakfast, or the late afternoon evenings, so you can get the working people as well. So those are just thoughts.
Comments, anybody? Joe?
Well, first, I wanted to piggyback on what Joanne had covered, I liked a lot of those comments or suggestions for topics that you had in there. Couple of things that I would add, I'd like to hear in the State of the City is, you know me, I sound like a broken record when it comes to volunteerism, but we're trying to build a community, and, and we want to do good news, and I think the focus on volunteerism, on how we use it within the city, and the hours that are donated from our citizens, I think a focus on that in State of the City would be good to cover, only because that's who we are, and we get a lot of activity from our citizens kicking in. The other thing that's always dear to my heart is, how did we get in the financial condition we are, which I think is really good, tie it to our policies, how that has gotten us to where we are, as far as the condition we are. There are some cities that are really still trying to dig out of, you know, this great recession, and we had a lot of forethought in making sure that that wasn't going to be an issue us going down the road, I think that's important to focus on that. And I think you have it in the State of the City here on your other topics, but when it comes to the overview of the economic conditions, you know, maybe some trends showing where we were on the vacancies, and where we are today, how the city has moved, you know, from '08 to now, and how the vacancies now are being, being filled, you know, some of the top recruits that we've got in there, you know, kind of focus on that, the jobs, and how we're moving with entertainment, et cetera. I, to me, to add to what Joanne had would be maybe those, those three areas. As far as moving the city council meetings around, I'm not quite sure I'm sold on that. We used to try to do it as budget, the problem is, nobody showed up, and you spend a lot of time, a lot of resources setting everything up, and nobody there. So, and if you can convince me that people will get there, then I'm in, but otherwise, I think it's a lot of time and energy spent without a whole lot of results, based on what I've seen in the past, that's just my two cents worth.
Joe?
You know, I have to, I have to piggyback and agree with you entirely on that. You know, we look at the number of folks that show up to the regular meetings, and they're, no offense to anybody who's sitting here, but we really don't get a very big crowd of folks unless they're here for a very specific issue. So I don't know that the roadshow is the thing to do with the actual council meeting. I like the idea of us getting the information out in perhaps less formal State of the City and more of a town hall type of approach, but this whole conversation seems to be, we don't, we don't know what it is we want to deliver yet, so I'm not, I'm not hearing any discussion about what is the, what are we trying to achieve, what's our objective? What we're being asked for is, what kind of format do you want, what time of the year do you want it, but we haven't talked about what it is we're trying to achieve with it.
The State of the City is giving information on...
Well, we've already found out that State of the City doesn't mean the same thing to everybody, so what does that mean?
No, no, the State of the City has done to two things, okay? It's done, we separate it up to the businesses, and corporations, industry, and then we do citizens. That's the difference. And that's the difference of, of how it's handled, and what you, and, you know, but probably most of that information that we are having this first one, it's going to be transferred right on to the next one with additional information. So I, it really, they're really, other than the venue and where you have it, that's a big difference.
Right, but what is it that we're going to deliver in that message? Are we going to deliver the exact same thing we're going to do in the geared for, geared for growth? Joanne shaking her head, no, but I heard we're doing two different ones, one for businesses and one for the residents. What does that mean?
All right, would staff kind of address that?
I have, I went back to the slide with the common topics that we saw in State of the City addresses, and so the getting, I...
Try the other, bring the other one up and see.
We'll just do that, oh.
Yeah, much better.
I can hear myself.
Yeah.
So these were some of the suggested top, or topics that I discovered while I was doing my research, and then I have written down the ideas that Councilmember Osborne provided from her research, and I have been taking notes, but it is something we'll need as we walk away as to what's the content of the State of the City.
I'm going to take it, let me...
Yeah, because it's not coming through to me.
Yeah, let me get one layer above that. What are we trying to do? These are the topics, but what are we, are we trying to educate the community, are we trying to have an interaction, the council and the community? Are we, I mean, obviously, we're going to try to do both, but in what format? That's why I say, sometimes the, the town hall format, the here, and I think Councilmember Campbell mentioned it, we're going to have them ask questions, because if they're asking questions, then it's a, then it's a town hall format. And there was, our experience in the last eight or 12 weeks has really shown that the community has a lot of questions, and we have not done a very good job of communicating all of the successes that we've had. So that's a good opportunity for us to, to do that and to ask those questions.
Yeah.
And if that's what we're going to try to achieve, then, then our whole, we're trying to say, we're going to do State of the City, and this is what State of the Cities are, but maybe we don't want to do a State of the City, maybe we want to do something completely different.
Can I just disagree with you a little bit on what you're saying?
Sure.
I think you're putting far too much blame on the city not getting information out. I think we have to...
I share as much responsibility as that.
Excuse me, we have to divide this up, citizens' responsibility, cities' responsibility, and in the middle of that, you and I, and the public must have this big printed word, listen and read. I can't direct people with their hands, I can't put a phone in their ear, and I can't turn on their videos for them. So I don't want us to, oh, the city hasn't done, no, our city's done some good work. It's just that people are not listening. I, I'm not disagreeing with you to have your format, okay, but I, I am disagreeing with you on that part. I'm not going to have us tearing down the city, saying the city's not, not, not. So let's put it on even well, where we, we can look at both sides and say, okay, let's improve our citizen side, and then we'll improve our side. But they have to come forth with this bill, they have to be as agreeable as you are sitting around this table.
Mayor, my, my whole point in using that particular phrase is, in communities that I've done other work in, a lot of, a lot of the time, you will hear residents say, the community, or this department, or this whatever, is the best kept secret in our area. And what they mean by that is, there's all these really good things that are happening, and we're just not getting it. Now, I'm not saying that we're not doing it, but whatever it is that we're doing may not be connecting with as many people as we possibly could.
So are you saying, because it's been suggested that we would have the departments come, and they would talk about the things that are going on? Is that what you're talking about?
That, if that's what we're going to try to achieve, and that's, it goes back to my original statement, what are we trying to achieve if we're trying?
So that doesn't have to be just a town hall, that can be a State of the City, too. I mean, they're both, I think we're getting mixed up in semantics, unless...
Right.
You want, you want people, and you have to be aware what kind of evening you're preparing here, okay? How much time do you want to spend in presentations, and how much time do you want to spend on questions and interest groups? Because you're going to attract some interest groups. So now we have to plan, you have to plan your timing for this. So keep that in mind as you're making these suggestions. So I think, okay, Cheryl, I think you had your finger up first.
Well, I respect what's being said, but I think town halls and State of the Cities are very different.
Mm-hmm.
And I think they both have their value, and I could see a city hall being, I'm seeing it, well, city hall, the town hall format, being very successful, because I don't think we've ever really given that opportunity, or had that opportunity. I've been involved with the Chamber, did several town halls over the years, and wonderful things have come out of them.
Can you just help articulate for me the difference you feel between the town hall and the State of the City, and what you experienced with your experience at the Chamber?
Sure. Well, a town hall that I've experienced, and quite honestly, I haven't experienced a lot of them, but I did go to a couple of Glendale's town halls, just to see what they were and what, what the format looked like, to see if it was something that I could do in another, you know, by switching around a little bit. And to me, it seemed that the mayor set her agenda, what she wanted to communicate to the citizens, that she had a list of things that were valuable or ongoing in the city that she wanted to communicate, and then it looked to me like it was to create a positive synergism in the population that was there. And it was targeted, of course, to business people, I mean, then that's just the way, I'm just, that's my experience. Town halls, on the other hand, in my experience, you pick two or three of topics that are hot topics, whatever that might be, education, or workforce development, or whatever seems to be important in the community that could use some, some energy. And then you go to the, the people that are experienced in that area, and they develop white papers. And when the people sign up to attend the town hall, they're given the white papers to come to the meeting, and then there's a presentation, usually you don't do more than two or three topics. And then the people just share ideas, and that's where the questions, and that's what, but it's not a question, it's not a protagonist question and answer, it's rather a team building question and answer, you know, looking towards solutions. Just, I mean, the Arizona town hall is basically set up that way, only, they only have one topic, pretty much, and every team works on that. But that, that's what we used to do, and quite honestly, that was where the steam came to the Seroptimists for the New Life Center, that, one of our other ones, that's where the energy came, to develop the Boys and Girls Club. And so I, that, that's my experience.
Of a town hall?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you for explaining that to me. Joanne?
Well, I think that's, what's always exciting about our city is that we tend to be innovative, and we tend to try something out, and we're able to go and change something to make it better the next year, you know, and, and I think that, that's the cool thing about where we are right now, is putting something together that we know we can always mold it for next year to be, to be something even better. And it would, it'd be great that this first one turns out the best, but I guess to me, how I kind of think about it is almost an in-between of what everybody's been talking about. I think that you addressing everyone, it should be you, you are, you know, the, the figurehead of our city, and it should be you, and you should be out there and talk to everyone. But just as I've seen over the years from, from building blocks, that when our fire chief, and our police chief, and our, a couple of our directors come out and speak to the principals, and speak to superintendents, they love hearing from that person. And I think that, that's a little bit about what we're talking about, because it could be, you know, Michelle coming out and discussing the new things that economic development are doing, and their new projects, and each one of them could have something very special that we're talking about with the city. You're kind of that emcee of sorts, you will give an address, and then you'll, you know, be bringing them each out. And then I think that, especially as to Bill's point, and what Sheri, the three of us have seen through this election cycle, there's a lot of questions out there by our citizens, there are. And so I think that if we, you know, had presentations, and then we said, you know what, we know we have an answer to everything that is a burning question to you out there. So each one of our directors are here, each one of us are here, and we are, are ready for the next half hour to answer whatever questions you can come up, you know, we're all here waiting for you. And I guess that's how we start it. And so you're giving the opportunity for the questions, we're giving the opportunity for people to express themselves, if it hasn't been answered by all of the input from the very beginning. I think that's the easiest way to, to start it. And then, you know what, if that's a flop, then next year, we try something else, you know, that's just kind of where I'm thinking.
Well, to me, a State of the Address is the head of that organization, or whatever it is, gives their vision, their thought on where they want the city to go, where they want to take them, and get us to buy into it, is basically, you're painting a picture to tell us all this wonderful stuff. And I think a State of the State could be very effective for Goodyear, because we've got a lot of exciting things that are going on. I like the idea of a town hall, if it's structured correctly. But I don't see it at the same time as the State of the State, because it's in... But I don't see it at the same time as the state of the state, because it's entirely different. And since this will be our inauguration of a state of the state, I don't know that I have ever heard of a state of the state in the 15 years I've lived here. Have I missed them?
No.
We haven't had them.
Okay.
No. It has been done.
So yes.
Good. So I haven't missed it. So this will be our first time. And I think we need to be very realistic on the message we give, and on how we want to set it up. I like the idea of it being in a school auditorium. That's the only place we have that we could fit a lot of folks in, that, regardless of whether it's at, at Desert Edge or Millennium, it just, I mean, if it's at a school, people will know to go there. And I like the idea of, I, I don't want to have a lot of preaching there. I don't want to have, I don't want to be overwhelmed with all of this information. So we need to have it really structured. And I like the idea of having folks available to talk. But if you'll remember, when we did the general plan, and I remember it so well, I believe we were in this room, we had, no, we were in the library, and we had an open meeting, and we had everybody there to talk about the concern that some of the residents had with how the general plan was progressing, and that they had not heard that we had had 52 meetings, public meetings, and all of that. And I thought it was very helpful, but I didn't want it to get out of hand either. So I don't want us to detract from the mayor's address, because that's the big deal. The mayor's vision, that's why we're having it. It's a state of the state. It's not a state of Wally, or the state of Joe. It's the state of this city, and you're our spokesperson, and you're going to lay it out, and we're just going to smile, and let you do all the talking.
Well, I, my state of the city will be from this group here.
Well, of course, but you're speaking it.
Sheri?
I, I agree with Wally a hundred percent. I think that's kind of, seems to be, and Sherilyn, and I, I think we're kind of all pretty much on the same page. I, I think of a state of the city, like the State of the Union, when the president speaks. You know, we, we invite our representatives, we invite, I see it as a more formal, whereas a town hall and taking questions is less formal. You know, because you don't see the governor when he's given to the legislature or anybody taking questions. I, I don't see that. I see that as a good avenue, because like I said before, I, I think our problem is, we, we get the information out, we are having to disconnect, and we just have to keep getting it out. And, and sooner or later, we will get that connect with the people that want the information. Some people will not come, I mean, and will not connect, and there's nothing we can do about that. I do like the idea of town halls, maybe instead of the council meeting at other places, we could do town halls at other places. And then with the questions, that's exactly, in fact, I had a couple of people sitting next to me at that one, who were a little miffed. I don't remember who it was, but it was a couple from Pebble Creek. They were a little miffed that a couple of people, I don't want to say hijacked it, but spent the time with really long, involved questions.
Thank you for bringing that up, because that is my concern.
And so I've seen where people take, they write the questions down, anytime during the presentation, then staff asks the questions. That's how I've seen it done. I mean, the, one of the Wigwam that we just went to with, with the governor, there was like three or four questions asked, but the staff went through them. So there, there were questions that people wanted answered, but it wasn't like someone's giving a long diatribe. So maybe that's where we get that out to the public, and, and we can pick different issues for different places, or whatever. That's a great idea, kind of focus them at different places. But I see the state of the city as a much more formal affair.
Jo?
Yeah, just to piggyback what Sheri said, I, I see it as informational, on the topics that you selected are key to the city. Where you've been, where you are, and where you're going.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Coming from the leader, who will give that spiel. And we decide on what topics you want to cover, all positive, all focused. I see the other half, where you do the town hall, as a separate environment. I, I personally wouldn't want to mix the two together, separate the state of, the state of the city in its own, and-
Are you saying, just clarify this, are you saying we'd have two things going out to public?
No, no. What I'm saying is, you said, I said, if you're going to do them, separate them.
The state of the city that we're doing now, and then doing a town hall.
But separate them, don't, don't mix and match them.
Later on.
Some other time.
They won't be mixed and matched.
No, but I'm, what I'm saying is, is to me, state of the, state of the city is informational, where we've been, where we are, and vision of where we're going, on some of the topics that we're talking about. All right? Joanne covered some of them, I put some of them down, there's some of them up on the board. Move forward with that, and that's the state of the city.
So the, the town hall, then, would be-
Something separate.
But it still would be information.
Yeah, but with, with the town hall, I see the town hall, as they were mentioning here, you could have questions, Q and A, and that type of stuff with the town hall. Okay?
We need to set the agenda.
Go ahead, Sherilyn.
With the town hall, when you pick the topics-
Right.
You, you, you present a paper that has the pros and cons of, or maybe two sides of the topic, so that people go in with a basic-
No. Okay. But is that going to answer, I'm going to interject before you even finish, is that going to answer what the people have complained about? People complained that they were not going to hear what the state of the city was, where we are. So now, how do we get that in?
No, I'm saying two very different events. Two, one is a problem-solving technique to get the community energized together to-
We take two out to the community?
Yes.
Okay, I misunderstood.
Yeah, no, it, they're just, in my opinion, they're absolutely almost 180 degrees. One is meant to be informational and factual. This is the real story, folks, this is where we're at. The other one is meant, these are challenges, or threats, whatever you want to call them, I prefer challenges. And let's put our heads together and come up with potential ways of resolving, blank, whatever it is we decide on, whether it's education, transportation, water.
Yep. Joanne?
Bill? Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I'm, I'm with you all on the definition of the state of the city. I, I believe that formality, and I'm totally with you on that. I, I was just throwing out ideas of, because this is something that's our own, and it doesn't mean that we have to follow, you know, the footprint of every other one. And so that's why, from hearing from everybody of the questions that people are asking, if we're not hitting it, and it wasn't taking questions from the audience as a town hall would be, it was back to, kind of like what, Wally, you were talking about with, with the general plan format, was, everybody's here that may be able to answer any other questions that you have. It wasn't a taking questions from the audience type of thing. I was just trying to see if there was a way of having the formality of what we all envision state of the city of being, and all of these different topics that, that Jo and I have said, or, or whatever. But at the very end, it feels like, at least to me, that you round the whole thing up by saying, if there's still a burning question that you have, we're here for the, you know, next 15 and a half an hour, whatever, to be able to, you know, individually, you can come up and ask the question. That's, that's where I was getting at, so.
Very similar to what we did at the-
With, with the general plan thing, yeah.
General plan, that the last meeting we had with the general plan. I'm gathering that, the rest, who was there at that?
We were all.
I think we were all there. I think all of us were there.
Is that, if you looked at that, is that, is that a scenario?
Not for the state of the city.
Not for the state of the city.
No, not for the state of the city. I'm out of the state of the-
For the town hall.
Now we're town hall. Now we're just thinking, take it out big, town hall.
Well, I think, okay, so we're all in the same agreement for the state, what we call a state of the city.
Yeah, we're, we're there.
We're all in it, okay. The town hall, I, I, let's, to me, get that state of the city complete.
Now, so let's get the state of the city over, and then do the town hall.
Well, you wanted, we kind of have an idea on the state of the city, so we can tell you what we sort of plan, what the, what the mayor, like you said, but the mayor wants to put out there. So we sort of have, and can, after this, can we kind of talk about that? Do we, you don't have it, do you?
You mean, other events, or, because what we heard was, you know, designing and, and planning for a state of the city, and then a desire to discuss if we wanted other events, like the council meetings, a different location, town hall meetings, and other ideas.
Okay, let's settle that right now.
So I think what I've heard on the state of the city is, it's formal, it's from the mayor, it's in October, it's in an auditorium, it's, I'm using yours, because it's easier, I wrote down all of the ideas, but where we've been, where we are, and where we're going, kind of thing, on a positive, high note of vision. And so I think the state of the city, I think I, I have direction there. It's just as if the council wants to do other things, other than the state of the city.
Jo?
That was the whole point of my question a little while ago, was what are we trying to do? Now we've identified the separation between a town hall and a state of the city, which I'm in complete agreement with. If we wait to do the state of the city until November, October, all we're doing is we're telling the city, this is what we are. If we then try to retreat in November and make decisions based on, it'll be the exact same retreat that we've had the last four years, which is us going by our best guess. If we're looking for an opportunity to get feedback, or try to understand what's going on in the community, and taking that feedback, we really need the town hall to occur in October and get that feedback. And this state of the city needs to occur earlier. I might suggest in inauguration years, perhaps that's the night to do it. On that, on that one night in June, that we're at the end of the budget year, this is what we envision the city, here's our new council, blah, blah, blah. And, and then in the, in the off years, when there's not an inauguration, then we can figure out what time of the year that is. But in October is the year, I'm just throwing it out there, that we do the town hall to try to get that feedback. And we've all talked about different ways of doing it. The general plan concept, that type, the way that that was delivered seemed to be very effective in the community. That would be a way to get that done. I don't know what, how they referred to it, when the presenters stay at a table, and the people, I refer to that as the speed dating format, where everybody rotates around to ask specific questions, but you can have PD at one table, fire at another, economic development, you can have that, and then have people go to there and, and ask those questions, and then rotate them, or you can just do the vignette style, however we wanted to do it, but to have, have that capacity there. Personally, we've talked a lot about where, I like Desert Edge, it's in the center of the school, center of the, of the, of the city, and we're not, we're not picking north, south, because that obviously is, is a big deal. And I can envision this turning into death by PowerPoint, and I hope that wouldn't be, it would really just be questions, you know, as, as we go through. But I, I'm just fearful if we, if we only do the state of the city in October, we're not going to get the feedback that we're seeking.
I, I have to agree with you on that. Jo?
I, I see where you're coming, Bill. My only question on the feedback is, if you have a town hall where you have 10 people show up, and you're going to base our future retreat on those 10 people, as opposed to annually, or every two years, we do a survey, where we ask our citizens, where do they want us to put our money, what do they like, they dislike, where should we put our energy? I feel more comfortable using that as a basis of our retreat, because it's supposedly scientifically-tested, surveyed, 5% delta plus or minus, as opposed to maybe 10 or 15 people who show up and say, no, this is where I want you to do, or that, you know, kind of where I'm coming. So that's my only concern, is if we come with our retreat in November, and we use a, a town hall forum that has maybe 15, 20 people, maybe even 30 people, as opposed to scientific one, where we go out and we ask them, where do you want us to put the money, like where Parks came in, and a couple of other issues had come in. I, I don't know, and I think maybe that would be more of a driving force to help us formulate our, you know, retreats, me personally.
Right. I'm not suggesting that that's going to be the only thing that's going to drive your decision-making, because I don't think that would ever be the case. And every year, when we do the, the citizen surveys, that, at least for me, that filters in as a, here's, here's an opportunity, that every time I engage with, with residents, there's another, another thing that goes into that decision-making, talking to staff, there's another thing that goes in. I mean, there's a million things that, that help us come to decisions. All I'm saying is, if we, it, it's just one more opportunity for us to have some more information dropped into our little, you know, sieves in our brain, before we come up with a, a decision, that, that's all. If we wait, then it doesn't get, it doesn't even get a chance to influence it.
Sheri?
I don't know if October is the best, but I think for the first one, that's kind of the date we probably should do it, because we really can't squeeze it in at this point, and then we're going to hit summer quicker than we know it, because we're almost to April. Maybe, once we schedule some town halls after that, maybe we move it up before the summer for the next one. But I, I just think logistically, otherwise, we're waiting until 2016. So I think we're kind of, you know, the year's going faster than we think by the time we get a plan. So we might just have to do October, see how it works, and then if we want to move it, I don't think it's set in stone, we can always move it up.
Bill, did you say something about, we may want to do it at election time, after someone is elected?
No, at the inauguration.
In June?
In June.
The state of the city? Well, if you start that tradition, you could have a new mayor someday in the state of June.
Oh, yeah.
So you have to think about that. And that puts that person on, that person will be like, well, I'm not too sure, I've been, you know, so you-
I've been mayor for a week, or an hour.
Yeah, so you want to think of the future, when, when I'm not sitting here, and they have the new person come on. And that's a lot of pressure to put on that new person.
Well, I just, you know, the, the president gets sworn in on the 21st, and a couple weeks later, they make another big speech. So if you're coming in as a brand-new mayor, I would love to hear from whoever that person is, what they think the vision of the city is.
Except with the president, he's not so close to the people. He doesn't go to the store with them, he doesn't go to the church with them, he's not in the schools with them, and so they have contact with us immediately. The president has shield, he's able to sit back and decide upon things, but as an elected official in a city, you are not.
No, I know.
And I could tell you this week, but how long it took me to go through the Safeway again. And, you know, so it just doesn't work that way. So, Wally?
Well, I, I think that your suggestion about having it in June was admirable. But if I'm a newly-elected council member, I don't want a state of the state on the night I'm being sworn in, because I'd like to have a little festivity, you know, that sort of thing. I like that. Is, is, is it ever on the table to move the time that we have our retreat in November? Or are we locked in, always?
We are, we are definitely not locked in. And matter of fact, the dates this year, we have them set for November 20th and 21st. The reason for the November timeframe, and certainly that can change if, if council would like that, it's to get input as we just start to formulate budget, as we start to formulate CIP. So it's just a, a good opportunity to do that. And then if there, there are any follow-ups, as far as, if there are new program or service, we have a chance to pull that together in time for the budget. But that, that's really been the, the biggest reason for the November date.
So October means that if you give something in October, you get the feedback in October.
You'd have plenty of time, yeah.
You get it to the staff before their November one.
Okay, well, perhaps I've lost where we are. Are we trying to now say we don't want to do the state of the city?
Right, we, we've already taken care of the one we're already going to do.
Well, I know, but we don't want to do that in October.
The statement so far is, they still feel the mayor should get up and, and speak on the state of the city.
Yeah.
But you should have additional forum to that. Is that what you're saying?
No, that stands on its, that stands on its own.
I don't think so. See, I'm getting y'all, sorry. I've had a long day, too.
I was going to say, can I?
So help, Winnet.
Well, what I think I heard was, the initial conversation was in October, Bill, or excuse me, Councilmember Stip-
Winnet, can you talk a little bit louder, because I'm not hearing enough.
Councilmember Stip suggested doing it at the inauguration.
Right, and that's-
But it was a suggestion, and I think we're back to, what I'm hearing is, in October, in an auditorium, the mayor only, providing her vision, where we've been, where we're at, where we're going, kind of thing, on a positive note. And that's what I've, I've heard so far from-
Oh, that's what I said, I'm sorry, I thought you were saying we needed to do the town hall before.
That's what, what Winnet just said is exactly what I heard also from, from this group. And we've all also said we wanted two different forums. All I suggested was, if we want to try to do a town hall, if it's important for us to get the feedback before the retreat, then we need to do it in October. If nobody is interested in having that town hall before the retreat, then the timing of the town hall is completely in flux.
Okay, thank you.
And that was all, I was, the only point I was trying to make.
Because that confused me, because I'd like to have the mayor do her state of the city, because.
Oh, I would, too.
And I'd like it first, to set the tone.
Correct.
To, to start the conversation, that's just my thought.
Well, I will tell you, I'll get you in just a minute, when I, they've been approached to doing this, I've had somewhat of a fear about doing it, and just doing that. And part of it is because I do believe we get a lot of information out to the people. Okay? I know there are these pockets that say we don't, and there's something, but we do get quite a bit of information. And the information we're not getting, and I, because I attended some of those debates, were isolated information from some people, and not everybody in the, it wasn't consensus that that was something wasn't being done. I, I wanted to be good, I wanted you to have what you want to have.
Okay.
But I just want to make sure that those people who have questions are anticipating some answers. And so your mayor gets up and says, blah, 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 and they walk away and say, well, didn't get any information from that city, they're not telling us anything, they're just telling us a vision. Think about it.
Mayor, most of, not all the feedback came from just those two sessions. I mean, walking door-to-door and talking to people. There were a lot of questions, and the, being able to answer those questions and provide that information is the, is what helped, which is what made me formulate my statement of, they just don't know. Now, you're right, you can't, we can take them to water, and we can shove their head in it, but we still can't make them drink it. But if, if we're doing something, then we can say, look, we've done a state of the city, we've done town hall meetings, we've done, I mean, here's the 10 things that we've done, what more do you want, is okay, but, you know, the level of communication that, we just haven't done it yet, and that was my only point, but just because we do a state of the city early in one year, doesn't mean we can't do it later in another year either. You are the sitting mayor, we are having an event, the people who are being put into office are already here, so while the inauguration is important, perhaps that becomes a, a good opportunity in this year to do it at that night.
We have to do something.
Right, that's what I'm saying, if we do it, and then we can do the other one later, and then next year make a difference.
It's loud and clear, and that's what we're trying to do, so it, it's council's decision on this one, so. Sherilyn was first, I'll put you next.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make clear, I don't think any of us don't want to do it, are not interested in doing it, but we want to do it in a way that the most people can participate with us. We don't want it to seem like we waited for certain populations to leave town before we had a state of the city. So for this year, I think October is, in my opinion, it is, is why we're, it makes sense. I just think it's good common sense. And I, I, I think it can be made very clear at the state of the city, that we're all open for, for input and to be approached, but we don't have to do it right then and there, because I think that takes away from the stateliness of what we're doing. And you know what, I think, too, it needs to be clear to all of us, and to our citizens as well, we want to make it the best it can be, but we've got to start somewhere. And to take a format that is proven, because there's a reason why so many people do it that way, because there are people that have been doing it for hundreds of years, and it has, you know, has mitigated to that point where this is the format they found most usable. And then, but we can always massage it as, as we intend to make this an annual event.
State of the city.
And I think, I'm talking about the state of the city right now. Yeah, I'm, I'm not, but I just think it's really important that we all understand that, that you don't come up with the best the first time, generally speaking. I mean, anyway, that's, that's my.
Why, you were saying this, do you, the other state of cities, many of them had another speaker come in. They had, like, Chris Camacho from GPEC came up, and then they had a businessman come up that represents a, a local business, kind of an entrepreneur type, and they spoke. All right, so I just want to throw that out to you. Joanne, you have?
And that, that certainly sounds like the business one that you'll be doing here shortly, so.
Yeah, and that's what, this is what they did for the state of the city.
Right, right.
Surprise brings somebody up, Avondale brought somebody up, I don't know, didn't they go to some of the other ones? I'm going to Peoria soon, so I'll know at that.
Well.
I don't know who's next here.
Oh, I was.
Joanne?
Sherilyn, you're, you're, you're correct on tried and true formats as to, to why to start. You know I like this to be different, but, and I just think that, it's, it's fine. I think that what would be really nice, if we decide to do the two different types of formats, state of the city should, should come first, because like Bill said, you're setting the stage, and then it can be the invite to the town hall that will be coming up. Because back to Wally's question, why does our retreat have to be in November? Because if it could be in January, then we've, you know, gotten the information, you've had the, the formality of the state of the city, we go into, so this, I mean, if it even works this, this year, I don't know, but if you had an early October state of the city, we're inviting for early November, early November, doing the, whatever you want to call it, town hall, or, or whatever that venue is, you're putting out the invitation about this is going to be the next, you know, highlight that you all can come, and however it looks. And then we get together in January, and we take it all from the two events, and we bring it together.
What's successful.
Mm-hmm. Sherry?
This is just really brief. I, I agree with what Sherilyn was saying, and I, I like the, the format, and we kind of give an invite, or further information, give something, a takeaway that will be, come to the, the next. Yeah, I also think the one problem with June is, is not just, I know we're talking about the Pebble Creek people, that community, that a lot of people leave, and the retirees leave in, in Canamia, but you also got a lot of families are going in June, too, because our schools get out in second, you know, third week in May, we're done with school, so I would be afraid if we tried that, we'd have a very limited audience, so I'd rather have the biggest pool as possible to make it a success.
Joe?
No, my only concern, and I agree, I agree that there's two separate formats, but when you're doing Q and A and questions and answers, and again, we have a lot of surveys that get that back, depending on the population, are you truly getting the input of what those questions, especially if they're requesting certain things be done, that represents the entire population, or just the small segment that's there? So we just got to be careful as you go through there, especially when you get into your retreat, that a lot of the other information we laid out in advance doesn't counter, counteracted, or contradicted, or et cetera, so, again, just.
You still said it's other, other, other things all running together.
Yeah, so, but I don't have a problem with, with having the two separate one, but if you're going to do a state of the city, it's more information, more formal, getting the information out to them.
Bill?
Okay, so, we've, we've all been talking about the same kind of state of the city format, which is a mayor vision, where we are, where we're going, where we've been. None of that, at least in my mind, and I don't know how anybody else, none of that involves Chris Camacho or anybody else from the business community. That is your address about this city, and we have a geared-for-growth, which addresses the other, the other side of it. And I think that's been our, our confusion, and what started this whole issue from the very beginning, is everybody else, and Avondale, and Surprise, and whatnot, their quote-unquote state of the city was a, this is where we're at for business development, they all called it open for business, and, but they refer to it as a state of the city. When, I'm going to say, the, kind of the average person heard the state of the city, they're thinking, what we've just been talking about tonight? What does the mayor have to say? Where are we going? Where have we been? What are we going to do? So we're using that phraseology interchangeably, and I think that's what gets us into trouble. In our minds, the state of the city is what we've defined tonight. It's not what Avondale defined, or anybody else. So for me, I would rather, I'd rather hear from the mayor, and, and that whole piece, and then we're done. And leave the business community to do the business one, I mean, we're charging them, they're going to go and have a lunch, and they're going to do whatever. The other thing, that's for the residents, and that's for, for them, or any, and then anybody else who wants to come, if a business person wants to come and listen to what the mayor has to say for the vision, great, come on, have some cookies, and sit with everybody else. But for me, I'd like to make sure that they are clearly, clearly separate.
Agree.
I agree.
All right, I think we got consent, Sherilyn, I'm sorry.
No, I, I agree with that, but I just kind of wanted to clarify something, Joe. When you do a town hall, it's not just come as come can.
The reservations are.
Reservations are made. It's not that you can't walk in, it's just that you will know. If only 10 people make reservations, then you cancel the event, because you've got 10 people that you can actually call, and say, it's obviously not a good time, we have not had the interest, so you're not going to get just three to 10 people, because that's not the way you run a town hall.
Any other comments?
I think my direction is.
You have to go away with this.
Is clear on the state of the city, and then what we'll do is discuss retreat timing, town hall, kind of try and narrow that focus, timing of that, and content, and then have that discussion with you. But right now, I'll focus on the state of the city, knowing that there's a desire to do possibly another event, a town hall-like event. Is that correct?
Everybody's satisfied here?
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to adjourn this meeting.
Can we do other ideas?
Sure. I thought we had them all in there, but go ahead.
I thought other was like, just other.
Okay, well, you go, give me some other ideas.
Okay, this is just some stuff, and some of it's good, some of it may not be so good, so I'm just going to throw out a bunch of stuff there. With, there was an article about youth commissions, and one was about Peoria, and I think, Wally, she's nodding her head, she saw it, what they do, I might have talked to you about that.
You did.
What, what they do is they have some of their youth commission members actually sit up here and be able to ask questions, they don't get a vote, and I don't know if that's something anyone would be interested in, but it really gets them really involved in the process.
Like a work session, bring in.
Yeah, like they get to sit here and ask questions, and get the packet, and, you know, so that, I thought that was a really innovative idea. And the other one is if there's some way, and I don't know how this would work logistically, of course, I didn't think that far out, but if we could have a way to update, either each council member have a homepage that we can update, or, or something that we can get, we've all got our individual Twitter and Facebook, but that means someone's got to subscribe to seven different pages. Or if, if someone can do it, that we can update it every once in a while.
You mean on our website?
Yeah, where there is some kind of bulletin board, so we can say, these are the things that are happening, like in Estrejo, or these are the things that, you know, the mayor's going to this week, so, you know, just kind of something that, I've, I've seen it on Phoenix and other websites where they have it, and I don't know if it's something, I don't want to give the staff, because we have very limited staff, and I don't want to overwork them. But if there's some way that we can maybe like, just send an email that it can be updated, and, I don't know, the website updated, kind of keep it up to date, because I think that's part of the information issue, is we do have, so many people have Twitter and their own Facebook, but there's no linkages, so it's a lot of effort, and people don't necess, it's back to the communication, both sides, the other side has to communicate, too, but realistically, if it's all somehow linked, or maybe we could link to our own websites, or page, and then we update our page, I don't know. That's just a thought, to get more information out there, easier for people, rather than I subscribe to Bill's Twitter, the mayor's Twitter, and.
My Twitter.
Your Twitter.
We Twitter each other.
And then I repost your Twitter, you know.
We tweet, I'm sorry, we don't Twitter, sorry.
Not Bill's Twitter. I don't know, that was just a thought, to get more information out there.
I've, I've put it down here, so.
Bill?
You know, one of the things that I had in my one-on-one with the manager was the, you know, we get that once or twice a week, notes to know, little email that comes out, and I had suggested we try to find a way to make that available, not that specific, but a tool like that, quick hit, five, six bullets, this is what happened, available to the residents, and that might solve that problem. Not that I'm that interesting, but quite frankly, if you're waiting for me to tweet or put something on Facebook, you're going to wait a long time for that, but that, that way, we're not, we're not in, even in an informal competition among one another. You know, I, and no offense, but I can imagine the competition between Councilmember Campbell, Councilmember Osborne, and you, on how many people can post more things on that.
I'm glad you left me out, Dan.
Yeah.
I don't post that much on Twitter.
No, I know.
You should see it, it's disgusting.
But I'm, you know what I'm saying, but if we have something that, that gets generated internally, that's a quick hit, gets the information out, then it, it's less about us, and it's more about what, what the city is doing. And if we want to self-promote, then we can.
Yeah, we have that.
When I first was on the committee at Pebble Creek, I did that, it was called, Did You Know?
Oh, that's right.
Remember that?
Yeah.
And they put that out all the time, and it was just one sentence, or just, did you know this is coming up, or did you know this was decided upon, or did you know you got to keep your garage door closed, or do you know, something like that, and it was just short, but it was long, and people looked at it, so.
Mayor.
Just a minute, I've got both of you.
Sorry.
Who raised their hand first?
Go ahead.
Oh, I was going to, total agreement with Bill on, on that, because I thought those have been wonderful little, little blurb notes that have been coming to us, and I see a great value to our citizens in seeing that same type of thing, whatever you want to call it. And, you know, when you sign up to the email blasts that we receive from Parks and Rec, or wherever, you know, we get those once a week, or something like that, so I don't see why we wouldn't be doing that same type of thing with, with the notes.
Yes, Winnet.
We have that in all areas, and you just sign up, if you want Parks and Rec, if you want council member updates from last night, so we have, yeah, we have that already available on the website. Citizens do have to sign up for it, because we don't push out mass emails to everybody. But you can go in and select the different areas that you want to get notifications on, and there's numerous different areas, and so we have that available right now.
Have we, maybe Mary hasn't seen it, can we put that out in the, in focus?
Sure, we can, we can do more communication on it, but we do.
But isn't that specific to a certain department? I mean, I think that what this is for our residents is saying, these are the top things this week, or.
You're talking, but that's separate.
You could do a hot topic section.
Yeah, a hot topic, yeah, you're signing up for weekly hot topic, you know.
And instead of the specific area, it's a weekly hot, and they, then they have to sign up to get it, instead of sending it out.
I could, yeah, I could see a lot of people wanting that, you know.
We, we do have that capability in the different areas.
You just have to market it, then, because obviously, that's the thing.
Well, we can start, I don't know, I don't know when the, in focus, I don't know the latest, when we have to have that, I don't know what the next publication is, and we have to have it in, but it sure would be good to get it in as soon as we can, a little column with all that.
Joe?
Again, don't, don't claim to be technology savvy, but is it, would it be difficult, just to piggyback on what Joanne said, and what Bill said, to have within the website, you have all these links on there, just one area in the corner that says, weekly hot topic, they click on it, instead of actually registering, it pulls up those notes that Bill was saying we're getting, you know, rootly, that the customers and what, you know, Joanne was talking about, that would be of interest to them, they click it, they see it, and then they move on.
You could do it either way.
Yeah.
Or both.
Yeah, or both, because my thought is, if you had something on there that's easy to identify, and they do go to the websites, they click it, they get the information, and they can check that weekly, or whatever, to see what's going on, because that is a lot of good information in there. And one click, they read it, and they're done, they don't have to worry about going through emails, or whatever the case may be.
The only thing is, we still have to look at those, I still like to, I still am one of those people, we have enough people in our communities that really don't check their emails all the time, and that are not into technology, and I want them to get information. That's why I fought so hard to keep the in-focus, because it's the only thing we have, yeah.
And I think when the, the topic first came up, we were thinking of the individual ones, and by doing just a sign up for hot topics or something, puts a little different spin on it, so, thank you.